Good evening, everyone. I am Kim Melnick, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 on this fourteenth day of May 2024. Thank you to everyone who has joined us in person and online. Would you please join me in observing a moment of silence? Please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, the School Board has the pleasure of recognizing students and staff for their achievements. Our first recognition this evening is for Youth Ambassador of the Sister Cities Association of Virginia Beach. Please welcome Aubrey Swain. The Sister Cities Association of Virginia Beach supports the youth of our city through the annual Youth Ambassador Program. In March, Aubrey Swain competed against six other worthy and talented contestants from across Virginia Beach schools and secured the title of SCAVB 2024 Youth Ambassador. She earned this honor as a result of her persuasive presentation of a pitch promoting the connection of Virginia Beach with one of its sister cities, Miyazaki, Japan, and by skillfully answering impromptu interview questions mirroring the role for which she was competing. As the Youth Ambassador, Aubrey will serve on the SCAVB Board and will appear in key local cultural events throughout the coming year. She is a sophomore at Cox High School and, I believe, also attends the Governor's School. Congratulations, Aubrey. We are so proud of you.
Our next set of recognitions this evening is for schools receiving exemplar achievement awards from the Virginia Board of Education. Five of our schools with the highest achievement award. That's more than any other district in Virginia. This designation recognizes students and their educators for excellence in reading, mathematics, science, and for narrowing achievement gaps. Let's welcome each highest achievement school with a brief applause as staff members come forward. And I'm wearing my green like I'm ready. It was coincidental, but... From Green Run Collegiate, we have Head of School, Rayanne Patricio, and several teachers. From Kingston Elementary, please welcome Principal Grant Baker and 5th Grade Teacher Maria Lamb. From North Landing Elementary, please welcome Principal John Chounds and 3rd Grade Teacher Kristen Turpin, who is also the school's Teacher of the Year. From Old Donation School, we have Principal Joel Goldenshue and music teachers Jim Reed and Paul Baird. And from Rosemont Forest Elementary, please welcome Principal Stephanie Haas and Gifted Resource Teacher Debbie Seth. The Board of Education also honors two of our schools with the Continuous Improvement Award for Making Progress in Graduation Rates and Core Subject Areas. From Tallwood High School, please welcome Principal Ryan O'Meara and Social Studies Teacher Lindsay Klausert, who is also the school's Teacher of the Year. Last here, but certainly not least, from Green Run High School, please welcome Principals Neil Bowser and Grad Lab Teacher Sandra Copeland. Because of the hard work and dedication of students, teachers, and staff at all these schools, Virginia Beach City Public Schools received more awards than any other district in the Commonwealth. Congratulations, schools. We are proud. We now celebrate our annual music awards. Our next recognition is for the students who have been named to one of the following groups: Virginia Music Education Association's All-State Band, All-State Chorus, All-State Orchestra, Honors Choir, and the American Choral Directors Association's Southern Regional Honors Chorus. The All-Virginia Band and Orchestra Ensembles and the All-Virginia Chorus are composed of students who pass multiple auditions to reach the high level of performance in the Commonwealth. Students must first audition at the district level and earn acceptance in their respective ensembles. They must then audition a second time and be accepted for participation in their respective strand. In addition, Honors Choir students have been selected as deserving choral students by the VMEA Robert Stanbeck Honors Choir Memorial Awards Scholarship Committee. The American Choral Directors Association's Southern Regional Honors Chorus comprises students selected from among their peers throughout the southern region, which is 11 states, to perform in the region's premier choral ensembles. To be chosen means that the students have distinguished themselves as a top performer and choral musician. The students we're recognizing tonight are grouped by the schools they attend, and we've invited their music directors and principals to join them. Students, please come forward when your name is called. Audience members, we ask that you please refrain from applause until the end of the ceremony so that all of our students feel equally praised and recognized for their hard work. We'll start with recognizing students from Cox High School. Cox's principal is Dr. Michael Kelly, and the orchestra director is Kevin Fields. The students being recognized are Braden Cruz, All-Virginia Orchestra, and Olivia LaPage, All-Virginia Orchestra. Next is Green Run High School. Green Run's principal is Ms. Tenille Bowser, and the band director is David Hobson. The band student being recognized is Lucio DeSantis, All-Virginia Band. The chorus director for Green Run High School is Jennifer Gervin. The chorus student being recognized tonight is Tyler Hellman, All-Virginia Chorus. Next up is Callum High School. Callum's principal is Mr. Ryan C. Schubert, and the chorus director is Carl Copan. The students being recognized are V. Rose Desette, All-Virginia Chorus, and Michael Carey, All-Virginia Chorus. Next up is Kimsville High School. Kimsville's principal is Ms. Melissa George, and the band director is Brian Webb. The band student being recognized is Kevin Fuentes Barrios, All-Virginia Band. Ocean Lakes... Next is Ocean Lakes High School. Ocean Lakes principal is Dr. Claire LeBlanc, and the band director is Caitlin Prophet. The band student being recognized is Theodore Everett Keith, All-Virginia Orchestra. The Ocean Lakes High School Orchestra Director is Angela Henry. The orchestra student being recognized is Vincent Yee, All-Virginia Orchestra. Next is the Visual and Performing Arts Academy at Salem High School. Salem's principal is Mr. Carey Manugo. The academy coordinator is Amy Skidibor, and the VPAA Choral Director is Corbin Pinto. The students being recognized are Anna Lee Barton, All-Virginia Chorus, Virginia Senior Honors Choir Student 2024; Ava Saunders, All-Virginia Chorus; Isabel Millen, All-Virginia Chorus, and Virginia Senior Honors Choir Student 2024; Mackenzie Estrada, All-Virginia Chorus; Madison Salisbury, All-Virginia Chorus; Emily Beatty, All-Virginia Chorus; Alyssa Johnson, All-Virginia Chorus; Adriana Crane, All-Virginia Chorus, ACDA Southern Regional Honors Choir Students 2024; Ally Shoup, All-Virginia Chorus, and ACDA Southern Regional Honors Choir Student 2024; Charlie Mullinary, All-Virginia Chorus; Valerie West, All-Virginia Chorus; James Torgerson, All-Virginia Chorus, and Virginia Senior Honors Choir Student; Dylan Cohen, All-Virginia Chorus; Isaiah Choice, All-Virginia Chorus; Chris Gerlock, All-Virginia Chorus; Savannah Rixon, Virginia Senior Honors Choir Student 2024; ACDA Southern Regional Honors Choir Student; Sharandon Anthony, Virginia Senior Honors Choir Student 2024; ACDA Southern Regional Honors Choir Student; and Evan Weisner, ACDA Southern Regional Honors Choir Student 2024. The VPAA at Salem High School's instrumental director is David Boone, and the orchestra student being recognized is Alex Joes, All-Virginia Band. And our last school for this portion of the recognition is Princess Anne High School. Princess Anne's principal is Mr. Todd Tarkenden, and the band director is John Boyd. The students being recognized are Jeremy Coonley, All-Virginia Band; Sadie Ford, All-Virginia Band; Noah G., All-Virginia Band; Luna Hee, All-Virginia Band; Jacob Long, All-Virginia Band; and Alex Viado, All-Virginia Band. The Princess Anne High School Chorus Director is Katie Davis. The chorus student being recognized is Catherine Hayden, All-Virginia Chorus; and the Princess Anne High School Orchestra Director is Alex Kelly. Christina Wong, All-Virginia Orchestra, is the student being recognized. Congratulations to you all for your outstanding work. Now, please, everyone, join me in a round of applause for these exceptional musicians. Next, we will recognize our school music departments for receiving Honor Band Awards. Let's welcome our five Virginia Honor Band Directors. Cox High School, Mike Lane; Callum High School, Cameron Baker; Ocean Lakes High School, Caitlin Prophet; Princess Anne High School, John Boyd; Salem High School, Andrew Smith; Tallwood High School, Timothy Rosatini. To earn this award, these schools received a superior rating at both the State Marching Band Assessment in the fall and the Concert Band Assessment in the spring. Selection as a Virginia Honor Band is the highest honor awarded to a high school band in the Commonwealth. Congratulations, Honor Band Directors. We are proud of you. Next up are nine of our music departments who are being honored as Blue Ribbon Schools. The Virginia Music Educators Association's Blue Ribbon Award is a prestigious recognition awarded to select schools that demonstrate exceptional commitment and achievement in music education. Schools earning this award received superior ratings for band, chorus, and orchestra at district assessments. The award is a testament to the hard work and dedication of music educators and their students, and serves as a symbol of excellence in music education. Let's please welcome staff members who make up their school's music department and were instrumental in their school receiving this momentous award. Feel free to applaud for each school as they are recognized. First, from Green Run High School, please welcome Band Director David Hobson; Chorus Director Jennifer Gervin; and Orchestra Director Josh Poe. Next, from Ocean Lakes High School, please welcome Band Director Caitlin Prophet; Chorus Director William Boardman; and Orchestra Director Angela Henry. From Old Donation School, please welcome Band Director James Reed; Chorus Director Ashley Landon; and Orchestra Director Paul Baird. From Plaza Middle School, please welcome Band Director Manuel Hernandez II; Chorus Director Aaron Dubose; and Orchestra Director Sarah McGee. From Princess Anne High School, please welcome Band Director John Boyd; Chorus Director Katie Davis; and Orchestra Director Alex Kelly. From Princess Anne Middle School, please welcome Band Director Steve Clendenin; Chorus Director Anita Lynn; and Orchestra Director Danielle Fagan. From Salem High School, please welcome Band Director Andrew Smith; Chorus Director Lynn German; and Orchestra Director David Boone. From Salem Middle School, please welcome Band Director James Bernard; Chorus Director Monte Thomas; and Orchestra Director Laura Parker. From Tallwood High School, please welcome Band Director Timothy Rosatini; Chorus Director Karen Nemeth; and Orchestra Director Adrian Puckey. Our final music recognition this evening is for the Class 2A Virginia Marching Band Cooperative State Championship. Please welcome members of the Princess Anne High School's Marching Cavaliers. The fabulous Marching Cavaliers won the Class 2A Virginia Marching Band Cooperative State Championship. Jacob Long is the band field captain, and John Boyd is the band director. This is the fourth state championship the band has won just in the last five years. Congratulations, our Marching Cavaliers. We are proud of you. And this concludes the School Board recognition for this evening.
Okay, and now we move on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? All right, seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion made by Ms. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Callan. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I call for a vote to approve the agenda as presented. The voting board is open.
So, Madam Chair, we have seven ayes, so the motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda.
Okay, tonight, Dr. Robertson, we look forward to your recognition for our superintendent's recognition.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased that last week you accepted our recommendation for Dr. Darnita Trotman, currently the Director of Employment Services in the Department of Human Resources, to be the new Chief Human Resources Officer in the Department of Human Resources to be effective on July 1. Ms. Woodhouse is looking for Darnita. Okay. Yep. So we can come back to it.
We... Yes, we certainly will. Absolutely. Plus, I think I see some sisters out there, too, some AKA sisters, who are dressed for the occasion, so we're... Okay. That's right. That's right. Okay, so on to the approval of the meeting minutes. Are there any modifications to the April 30, 2024 regular school board meeting minutes as presented? All right, hearing none, I call for a motion to approve the April 30 minutes. Motion made by Ms. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Owens. Any discussion? All right, the voting board is open.
So, Madam Chair, we have seven ayes, so the motion did pass for the approval of the minutes from April 30, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The School Board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the School Board and the School Division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section of the School Board agenda is for the School Board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the School Board meeting. I'd like to remind everyone attending tonight's meeting, this includes those on the dais and those in the audience and online, to please speak with respect and kindness. The School Board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speaker, our student speakers, we have Lawson Burrows, Mateo Pencaldo, and then Aubrey Swain. Lawson Burrows?
Hello. Hello, School Board members. My name is Lawson Burrows, and I'm a student at the Ivy Academy of Pitts and High School. I'm here today to request that the School Board reassess its policy on the weighted grades for students who attend the Governor's School for the Arts. I come from an arts family. My parents are in law practice, but their background and hearts are in the arts. All three of my sisters who spent four years at GSA graduated from musical theater. I, myself, am currently a freshman in the instrumental music department, in which I play trumpet. Admittedly, balancing the academic load at their home school with the demanding GSA curriculum was nothing short of daunting. They often found themselves having to dedicate more time to GSA practice than to their home school assignments. In order to get an advanced diploma, they also had to take summer school classes to fulfill the requirements. In addition to the service and action goals mandated by their academy programs, they also required to complete 25 community service hours for GSA. Choosing to attend GSA was a great decision. I feel at home, and the other musicians are phenomenally talented. I have had more opportunities at GSA that would otherwise not have been provided. I'm able to receive college-level classes and pre-professional training at GSA. The instrumental music curriculum includes college-level classes such as music theory, oral skills, and music history. Since joining GSA in September, I played side-by-side with the Virginia Symphony, and I've also had one-on-one instruction in a masterclass with the Brass Group Ensemble, Ten Thing. This is an opportunity not even college students are provided. As I said to my sites on the BFA in music, it's only fair to request that the School Board to reconsider weighting the grades at GSA, a practice already implemented by five of the seven school districts which GSA is at. This adjustment was not only enhanced my competitiveness for merit aid scholarships, but also leveling the playing field for GSA students. This change will undoubtedly help GSA students seeking to further their higher educational pursuits. Thank you for your time.
So, for the record, we just... I guess in theater style, we jazz hand here instead of clapping so that we can just keep it moving along, and I thank you for that.
Our next speaker is Mateo Pencaldo, then Aubrey Swain, then Jenna Stone.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the VBSPC Board. My name is Mateo Pencaldo. I am a freshman at Kimsville High School, and I am a first year at the Governor's School for the Arts. I am in the Theater and Film Department. As you all may know, I am here to talk about giving students the Virginia Beach City Public School District weighted GSA classes. My first reason is that we are taking college-level courses. In the theater department, we are taking classes on the same level of education as college-level acting classes. We are also being taught by professionals in the acting field. All of our teachers and department head have real-life professional experience in the field of acting, such as Broadway and worldwide television. Also, most of our teachers have their bachelor's in fine arts or master's in fine arts. We are taking college-level classes by professionals with college-level educations, which is exactly like an AP course. We are not being credited for these classes. My second reason is that we are being given a disadvantage against other students who attend GSA. Every other school district besides one that attends GSA already has weighted classes. For the students in VB, we are at a disadvantage against these schools when competing for college. Colleges will most likely pick a student with a higher GPA over students with a lower one. By giving us these weighted classes, we are being put on equal grounds as other students, as other school districts, and it gives us a better chance to get into dream colleges. My third reason that we should have weighted classes is because GSA is an intensive program. We go to GSA for at least two hours extra a day. For some, it can also be six to eight. We also take two to three extra classes per quarter. The students at GSA are carrying a college-professional level workload whilst also having to maintain an above-average GPA at our respective home schools to stay in our program, oftentimes whilst having to balance honors and AP courses in school, and for some, a job on top of these workloads. For the students at GSA, the commitment is greater than taking multiple AP courses, and yet, we are being given no extra reward, like we would be if we were taking AP classes. Overall, Governor's School for the Arts is an intensive, college-level school where students are going above and beyond in order to get more experience in their respective fields. We go to a school for extra hours a day. We are carrying a college-professional level workload, and we are taking college-level courses by real-world professionals. Every student is getting experience they would not get anywhere else. These courses are more intensive and rewarding than AP courses. These courses are more intensive and rewarding than AP courses, and yet, we aren't getting the credit we deserve for them. And so, I leave you with one final thing to think about. If every other school district has weighted GSA credits, why can't the students of Virginia Beach have the same opportunities? Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Aubrey Swain, then Jenna Stone.
Good evening and thank you so much for your time tonight. My name is Aubrey Swain and I am a sophomore at Cox High School and the Governor's School for the Arts Musical Theater Department. GSA has truly changed my life. I have always had a passion for theater and GSA is equipping me for a career in this field, imparting invaluable life lessons and real-world readiness through its rigorous curriculum. I spend more time working on things for GSA than I do for all of my AP classes at Cox put together. The demands at GSA are comparable to a college program. The expectations and pressure are immense. My schedule is packed, school from 7:20 to noon, then GSA classes from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., followed by rehearsals until 9:00 or 10:00 p.m., as well as piano lessons, guitar lessons, vocal lessons, dance class, or music theory class. This routine alongside my regular coursework at Cox emphasizes the intensity of my commitment. For the past month, I've rehearsed until 10:00 p.m. every night, followed by hours of AP test preparation, which I finished yesterday. With AP testing behind me, I'm now focusing on GSA's equivalent of a final exam, juries, where we perform for a panel of instructors mirroring real-world job auditions. Weighting GSA courses more heavily would not only reflect the effort we invest, but also enhance our competitiveness in college applications and scholarship opportunities. Class rank plays a pivotal role in college admissions and a weighted GSA program would greatly benefit us all. In just two years, GSA has provided incredible opportunities, shaping my future and opening doors I once thought impossible. I am very excited for my junior and senior year and all of the amazing things happening at GSA. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Jenna Stone.
Hi, my name is Jenna Stone. I am a third-year student at the Film Program for the Governor's School of the Arts, and I am here today to request that current and future students at GSA be recognized for the college-level work that they are doing. At GSA, students are given high-level training by industry professionals with hands-on experience. Indent classes are taught on all aspects of film production, which thoroughly prepares students for future careers in the field. Some classes are organized by grade level, each building on prior knowledge. Instrumentary classes such as tools of trade, basics cinematography, sound, lighting, editing, and screenwriting are offered, but they're also required. The more specialized classes are also taught, including producing, directing, improv techniques, audio mixing, audio editing, graphics, animation, and visual effects. Every year, at GSA, students are given high-level training by industry professionals. Sorry, I'm reading the same paragraph. All students take documentary and photo drills classes, learning things such as media literacy skills, interview techniques, and weekly hands-on photography. We also take film and history classes where we study past works by different artists around the world. Some have included Alfred Hitchcock, Spike Lee, and women in film. Every year, students are given an entire year to write, plan, cast, produce, and edit their own unique films. All resources needed to make professional-quality projects are given at GSA, and students learn how to work in a variety of different real-life roles as they are each other's film crew on set. All films premiere at the narrow, at our film festival, and ours is next Saturday. This year, the Film Program worked with industry professionals from New York and LA to make a professional music video for GSA alumni Jake Clements, who is in the Bruce Springsteen Band. Over a week of shooting, the students got to work very closely with the professionals, using high-end equipment and filling many of the professional roles, such as assistant director. Last year, we got to work with PBS Nova and WHRO to create a series of short documentaries for a documentary that PBS is doing on climate change. All GSA students should receive weighted credits. GSA is not merely a school, but a training experience for the rest of our lives. We all spend hours outside of school on the weekends and even over the summer working on our projects and work for GSA. I think all the students agree that we spend 10 times more time and energy on our GSA work than we do for even our hardest homeschool classes, so we should get the credit for that. Thank you for listening.
Our next speakers will be Matthew Cody Connor, Diane Muscovac, and then Jennifer Burrows.
I cannot in good faith serve on this committee and have a part in dismantling public education. That was school board member Trenace Rigs. Just to be clear, the committee Mrs. Rigs was talking about is our school board's legislative committee, and the people Mrs. Rigs are talking about that are trying to dismantle public schools are Mrs. Manning and her group of ultra-conservatives that have taken over our school boards. The plan's pretty straightforward. First, discredit schools using lies and propaganda targeting our most vulnerable minorities, who are least able to defend themselves. Pit teachers and students against parents. Use that manufactured fear and distrust to infiltrate positions of power, then use those positions of power to pass policies that create environments of discrimination, bullying, further eroding public perception of our schools. Then defund and dismantle our schools by pushing legislation that channels funding and resources away from them towards private religious schools. Did I miss any steps? You want to destroy people's confidence in public schools, then dangle the carrot of school vouchers in front of disgruntled parents promising them that their kids will receive a quality private education. You don't tell them that most of their kids will never have a chance at that education, that those schools do not have to accept their vouchers or their children, that private schools can pick and choose who they let in, effectively allowing them to resegregate American schools. You don't tell them that we've learned from states like Arizona that those vouchers are never enough to bridge the income gap, that the vast majority of that money goes to families that already have children in private schools. You don't tell them that most of their kids will be required to stay in the same schools, schools that are now being systematically robbed of resources and support, that the schools their children will still have to stay in will become pipelines toward poverty and prison while their taxpayer dollars go to pay for some rich family's private education. You want to pitch private school for everybody and all you're really selling is snake oil and bibles. A nation that expects ignorance... Sorry, a nation that expects to be ignorant and free in a state of civilization expects what never was or will be. That's Thomas Jefferson. People cannot be free and ignorant. And I think that is your whole intent. You're intentionally stealing people's freedoms by destroying their education. Now more and more, the community is starting to see the cancer for what it is. And my only hope is that come November, we can begin cutting out the rot. Thank you, Mrs. Rigs.
Our next speaker is Diane Muscovac, Jennifer Burrows, and then Julie Swain.
Good evening. Mass shootings are defined as four or more people being injured or killed. For the last three years, there have been more than 600 mass shootings, and on the average, that's almost two per day. I think about the possibility of something like this coming close to home. Not to be negative or a pessimist, but with statistics like this, I want to make sure there's no stone unturned. Our children need us. Now, I know there are reactive measures in place inside school buildings today, and these reactive measures are good. But instead of reactive, what would you think if we took proactive measures? The only way to be proactive is to help people know the difference between right and wrong, and the key to this is to catch them at a young age. Now, can we catch everyone? No. But we could start somewhere, just like the starfish story when there were thousands of starfish on the sand and a girl had only a little bit of time to save them. She would throw each starfish in the ocean one at a time, therefore making a difference to each one she threw back. Did she save them all? No. But she did make a difference to the ones she was able to get to. This could be us. I resent the National School Chaplain Association packet to each of you at your collective email address. Please just take a look at it and let me know your thoughts. You have nothing to lose by keeping an open mind and an open heart. Also, as you're reading the information, think of our children and take yourself out of the equation because this is about their safety and changing hearts of people starting at a young age. Three facts about NSCA, which is the National School of Chaplain Association. The NSCA has worldwide experience and is a trusted provider with 25 years of experience. For those interested in becoming a chaplain, the NSCA offers comprehensive training for pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. The training is mandatory. The school benefits because the certified chaplains provide nonjudgmental spiritual care and guidance for individuals experiencing anxiety, depression, harder loss, which is a necessity for comprehensive mental health care. These three summary points don't even begin to explain the benefits of the NSCA can offer. Remember, teaching students about Christianity and its positive influences on American culture is not only possible, it is legal and a legitimate academic pursuit for public schools. In America, the notion of separation of churches misunderstood and misapplied. Contrary to popular belief, the phrase does not appear anywhere in the Constitution of the United States, but was used in a private letter written by Thomas Jefferson in reference to state-sponsored religion. He was against the government mandating religion of its citizens. His statement had nothing to do with Christianity being totally removed from public arena. There's a big difference between the two. Till next time, let's be proactive and change our hearts.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Burrows, then Julie Swain, then David Ratz. Jennifer Burrows.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Burrows and I'm here today to ask you to consider weighting the grades for the Governor's School for the Arts students. Our family is an arts family. Our family owns a family law business in Virginia Beach. I run the business and their dad is the attorney. But both of us have an extensive background in performing and in the arts. Our hearts are in the arts. I currently serve on the board for the Virginia Musical Theater as well. The only sports in our house is when someone throws a crumpled piece of paper into the trash can and everyone in the family yells, "Sports." GSA is near and dear to my heart. At its inception in 1985, GSA was a summer program for the first two years. I was fortunate enough to attend the Governor's School for the Arts in the Dance Department for those two summers in 1985 and 1986. Yes, I am a lot older than I look. When the program became full-time, I was enrolled in private school and was not able to attend. We have four children. Our daughter Jacqueline graduated from the Musical Theater Department in GSA in 2019. Our identical twin daughters Madeline and Isabella graduated from the Musical Theater Department in GSA in 2023. And our son Lawson, who spoke earlier, is currently a freshman playing the trumpet in the instrumental music department. I am honored and humbled that all of our children have had the opportunity to attend GSA. I have also served as a PGSA chair, which is the equivalent of a PTA president for the last eight years, and I plan to stay in this position until Lawson graduates in 2027. There are seven school districts that feed into GSA. Virginia Beach and Portsmouth are the only two school districts that do not weigh the GSA credits. Virginia Beach students comprise the largest percentage of the student party at GSA, which is 35%, and Portsmouth only represents 6%. There are only 383 students at GSA. I want to speak to the rigor of the GSA program to the level of professionalism of the program. When my oldest daughter was in the Legal Studies program, we had to explain the rigor of the program to her teachers. It was then I realized that the teachers at First Colonial had the misconception that GSA is an extracurricular activity and only a place where they pursue their hobbies. The same was true when our daughter, when one of our twins graduated from the EBA program from Kempsville High School and GSA. She was the first to do both. Speaking to the rigor of the program, the first consideration is that the students are gifted. They are chosen from hundreds of applicants. There are only 383 students from seven school districts, and admission is tough. All GSA students are required to maintain a 3.0 GPA, and some of the departments require them to maintain a 3.5 GPA to stay in the program at GSA. The next consideration is the curriculum. There are six departments at GSA: instrumental music, dance, musical theater, theater and film, visual arts, and classical voice. All students take college-level classes to hone their craft. They also take history classes, musical theory classes, anatomy classes, and many more classes that you would not expect. I'll provide the board with the entire curriculum by email because I only have three minutes. They take quizzes, tests, write papers, in addition to having hands-on classes in their disciplines. If you have any doubt as to the level of the classes, our daughter Jacqueline just graduated from a BFA Musical Theater program in 2023. She graduated from one of the top 10 musical theater schools in the nation, which only accepts 1% of their applicants. She was not challenged in her program until she was a junior because she had already taken those advanced-level classes at GSA. Dual and Rosemont classes are weighted because they are taught at the college level. AP classes are taught at the college level. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Swain, David Ratz, and then Leigh Anne Stone.
Good evening and thank you for your attention. I am here tonight to implore you to reassess the policy of weighted grades for GSA students. My name is Julie Swain. I was a math teacher and field hockey coach for over 20 years at Cox High School. I have always been immersed in athletics and am very familiar with the benefits of extracurricular sports and activities. I am a firm believer that involved kids are happy and productive future adults in our community. In my years as a teacher, I was familiar with the Governor's School for the Arts and had numerous students that attended GSA, but I did not have a good understanding of what it was all about. I always expected that my daughter would follow in my footsteps and play hockey at Cox, but I learned very early in her life that her interests and passions were not on the hockey field, but on the stage. It was through my daughter I have come to recognize my ignorance about all the amazing things going on at GSA. If I was honest, I don't think I was always as supportive as I could have been for my GSA kids who used to leave my math class 15 minutes early. I can still remember the face of a student who was struggling in my geometry class and could not stay for extra help after school. I wish I had been more accommodating and respectful of her busy schedule. I now have a new perspective. Unfortunately, I think there are many teachers and perhaps school board members that do not have a good understanding of what is expected of these kids. I am proud that my daughter was recognized tonight as a new student ambassador. I firmly believe she was successful in achieving this based on her background in the performing arts. She has learned many skills: communication, work ethic, empathy, resilience, teamwork, organization, and time management, to name a few, that will stay with her no matter what path she takes. For the past few weeks, she has rehearsals that last until 10:00 or 10:30 at night. This leaves no time for extracurricular anything at Cox. She has taken three summer school classes just to fit in the classes she feels she needs to be competitive in the craziness of college admissions. No clubs, no SEA, no after-school extra help from her teachers, and no time for team sports like field hockey. This is not the path I originally saw for her, but instead, I have been amazed at the opportunities that have come her way. She has had masterclasses with industry professionals about once a month or more. These are former GSA students on Broadway today. She sang a solo with the Virginia Symphony at their fundraiser ball in front of 600 people at the main in Norfolk. She has traveled to Japan and performed in five different cities while staying with host families, learning and appreciating different cultures and traditions. To say she is becoming future-ready for an ever-increasing global society is an understatement. I wish I had been more aware of the amazing things going on at GSA, and I invite you to explore and learn more about what is happening at GSA. It is a gem for our school system, and VBCPS students make up the largest percentage of kids there. It shocks me that VB is one of two districts that do not give weight to the high-caliber learning and professional experiences. We are asking you tonight to do some exploration. See for yourself some of the amazing things going on at GSA in the next few weeks. Please don't be like me, like I was, and allow a lack of understanding to hold us back from giving these students credit where credit is due. I hope my perspective as a former teacher and coach and now an enlightened, proud parent has given you something to think about tonight. I really appreciate all of your efforts to make VBCPS the best for all kids. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Ratz and then Leigh Anne Stone.
All right, good evening, members of the school board. My name is David Ratz. My wife and I currently have two students at Cox High School. My daughter is a sophomore at Cox High School and is also in the Governor's School of Arts and Ballet, and has been since her freshman year. I'm here to request the board to finally and immediately approve the weighted grading for students at GSA. Unfortunately, Virginia Beach has kept its students who are enrolled in GSA at a significant disadvantage, not only over their peers in the Virginia Beach school system, but also their peers in Virginia schools, including the school systems in Hampton Roads. For those not familiar with GSA, high school students wishing to apply to GSA must complete an application process. Video applications provide letters of recommendations from teachers and administrators, an interview to be considered for selection at the school. Only a few students are selected from each Hampton Roads City High School in various disciplines. The students must also be academically sound and show strong potential for acceleration in their respective disciplines. A student is not guaranteed to remain at GSA from year to year, but must demonstrate both academically and in their discipline that they deserve to be there. GSA is also designated as a gifted program for Virginia Beach schools. Although I cannot speak for all students, I can say that my daughter and many of her GSA peers are excellent students academically in their homeschools, not only maintaining high grades, but rigorous schedules, and also taking honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment classes. They are required to maintain high academic standards at GSA and take many courses that would be considered pre-professional and college-level. In addition, many GSA students, such as my daughter, also belong and train in outside academies and studios. In addition to their schooling at their local high school in GSA, all of them maintain good grades. Many GSA students are also involved in community organizations, events, which you've seen. In other words, GSA students are highly motivated, highly achieving, and very hard-working. Sadly, they do not get any weighted grade credit like their peer academies and other local high schools. Sadly, they do not get any weighted grade credit like their peer academies and other local high schools. What may not be known to the board is that many GSA students are preparing or will be competing for scholarships and college entrance to not only some of the most prestigious schools and fine arts, but various colleges and universities for degrees in medicine, law, education. Again, they are at a disadvantage when competing against high school students in various academies and other high schools in Hampton Roads, which already have weighted grading. As this board may know, GSA students from Virginia Beach is, students are at a substantial disadvantage in their GPA and class rank. I believe the board has some examples. A student could be ranked 31st if not weighted and 7th if weighted. This means possibly less scholarship money for college, being less competitive for entrance spots. In other words, Virginia Beach GSA students are academically disadvantaged from their own GSA peers and other schools. This is also a disadvantage to prospective VB students with opportunities to be selected for the Governor's School. I implore this board not only to approve weighted grading, but do so effective immediately. These things, these are students under your watch. Besides, since when does this board get to approve anything that they do not need to allocate?
And that is time?
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Leigh Anne Stone.
Hi, I'm Leigh Anne Stone. I'm a proud parent of a Governor's School student. I signed up to speak because I wasn't sure if my daughter was going to be able to speak this evening, so I wanted to make sure our word was heard, and she did a beautiful job when she came up. So also I want to add to it is that I am a VB CPS alumni. I have the two children who have gone through school since first grade. I'm also an employee. And I have always considered Virginia Beach to be one of the best school districts in the state. So when this topic came up, I was shocked to find out that Virginia Beach isn't even competing with our neighbor cities. I find GSA, I know that some courses are weighted and some aren't. GSA is a different animal. These students go to a full-day program after they attend their high school. These kids love attending this extra program, and sometimes high school courses are just because they need to get them underway. What I would like to say is that I do believe that GSA should be weighted because they are college-level courses. The caliber of instruction and the caliber of the content that they are learning was more evident when my daughter and I went to do college tours every spring break. When we were touring the film departments, she saw the equipment. She saw the programs they were using. We learned what the curriculum was. And at least the first two years of their programs is stuff that she's already learned and practiced and done out in the field in the Governor's School. These aren't just honors courses they're taking. These are professional college-level courses. I would also implore the board to please make this for future students, but more importantly, for the current students that are at Governor's School. They need this credit now, as we've already heard. It's a very competitive, very competitive market. I mean, to get into Virginia Tech, you have to have like a 4.3. So please do this retroactive for the current students that are graduating this year and the next three years of the students who are currently enrolled. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're going to move on to our online speaker. Nicola Georgiev, please unmute. Hold on one second. Please unmute. Try speaking one more time. Try one more time, please. No, we're still having difficulties? I am sorry, we are having some difficulties. You are free to email the school board and to sign up to the next board meeting on May 27. Thank you for your understanding.
Okay, now we're going to circle back to the superintendent's recognitions.
And we'll give the clerk a moment. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, we are pleased that last week you accepted our recommendation for Dr. Darnita Trotman, currently the Director of Employment Services in the Department of Human Resources, to be the new Chief Human Resources Officer in the Department of Human Resources effective July 1. Congratulations. And clearly, you have lots of fans and several guests. So let's meet your guests.
Thank you. I'm my mother's sister, May. My father is George. My mother is Melanie Johnson. My children are rich and wealthy. I'd like to say thank you to all of the students that were there today. They've helped out, too. Dr. Eugene Saltner, Dr. John Ryan, and my central office administrator, Mrs. Squidhouse. So all of my supporters. And if I did not know, but me here and coworkers, thank you so much for all the support you gave.
Congratulations.
And for all the times that you brought candidates in for recognition, I'm happy that you got to stand tonight. Congratulations. Okay, and so now we move on to the information portion of the agenda. And tonight, we're going to start with the Division-wide Literacy Plan, and we welcome Danielle Calucci, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Danielle Calucci, and I'm the Chief Academic Officer. I am joined by Executive Directors of Elementary and Secondary Teaching and Learning, Thomas Quinn and Lorena Kelly. We are here to share the Division Literacy Plan, which is a requirement of the Virginia Literacy Act. We will begin by reviewing a few recent revisions that the Virginia Department of Education has communicated to school divisions across the Commonwealth. VDOE recently shared that 4th through 8th grade students will not need to take the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System, otherwise known as the VALS screener, in the 24-25 school year. So this was a big change. We were under the impression that we would be training middle schools and giving this, and this is what used to be the PALS assessment. And so this was actually a very good change for us as we ease into meeting all of the provisions of the law. The student reading plans, they also received a modification. As you can see, they are no longer K-8 for the upcoming school year. Only kindergarten through 3rd grade will utilize those student reading plans as part of the Virginia Literacy Act for this coming school year. The Virginia Department of Education also revised the scope of the Division Literacy Plan, which I'm here tonight to share with you. It only is applicable to grades K-5 for the next school year. The following school year, it will encompass K-8. So even though it's called a Division Literacy Plan, we have to keep in mind and also communicate to the public, everything that is in it can only apply to elementary for the upcoming school year. Expectations for implementing the new standards of learning, the new elementary core textbook, and ensuring K-8 administrators and teachers complete the VDOE-required evidence-based professional learning is still a requirement. And you see that, that those remain unchanged on the slide. We are pleased to share our proposed Division Literacy Plan with you this evening, which you should have a copy of in your board materials. Please note, this plan template does not necessarily include more specific information that you might expect to see in a comprehensive plan. It is really a compliance template to ensure school divisions comply with the provisions of the Virginia Literacy Act. So it is in PDF form when it's sent to divisions, and we have to fill in the fields, and we've been provided training on what needs to be in the plan. So it's not something the division can alter to make our own style or what we might want to put in a plan. They are requiring our initial submission to be provided to VDOE by July 1. Because VDOE still has decisions pending, they are permitting divisions to mark portions of the plan as to be determined. And for this reason, we will need to submit another submission of our plan, which will be due on December 6, once we receive the information needed to clarify what we mark as to be determined. The Division Literacy Plan template includes the six sections displayed here. I will summarize each of those for you in a moment, but I'll pause now so that you can review those six components. The first section of the Literacy Plan template focuses on planning for comprehensive communication and requires divisions to describe the Division Literacy vision. As part of our vision statement, we articulate that we are committed to providing students with high-quality literacy instruction grounded in science-based reading research in partnership with parents to ensure every student who walks into a Virginia Beach City public school will leave a proficient reader, ready to access rigorous pathways, and be successful in their lives. Section 2 of the VDOE template requires divisions to list the high-quality instructional materials, referred to as HQIM, that they selected from the Virginia Board of Education-approved curriculum list. I would like to take a moment to thank each of you for helping us to expeditiously adopt our new curriculum as that is enabling us to get the materials here, hopefully before teachers leave for the summer so that they can have those if they want to have them over the summer. We have received feedback that this has relieved some of the worry that our teachers have. We have also been providing ongoing principal professional learning to help them strategically plan for the implementation. And you can see on the screen here a picture of a recent literacy leader and principal professional learning that we provided to both of the groups at the same time. And we were able to clarify some questions and also gather questions and solicit their feedback on what they would like to have communicated or what they would like us to ask the state to clarify expectations for them. As indicated on this slide, we plan to use HMH Inter Reading for our core textbook. In the plan, you can also see materials listed for special populations on this page, such as English learners and students with disabilities and gifted learners. The plan must take into account the resources used to supplement and provide intervention for special populations. Our supplemental instructional material section is still listed as TBD because the VDOE has only released a preliminary list of approved supplemental and intervention materials. For intervention, some of our current resources are on the preliminary list, which was good news for us. We will update the plan before the final submission date of December 6 with HQIM additional information. And now we will move to Section 3 in the plan. This section describes the professional learning requirements. As you are aware, our elementary reading specialists were required to attend a two-day in-person institute this school year and to complete a year's worth of VDOE Canvas modules. They are almost done with those now. And new specialists and those who are not able to attend or access the modules due to VDOE capacity this year will be completing theirs soon as well. As you can see in the plan, all K-5 teachers, including Title I and Title II reading teachers, special education teachers, and English-as-a-second-language instructors serving K-5 students must complete nine VDOE VLP Canvas modules this year. We are very happy to report some good news regarding this heavy lift. The state communicated that Volume 1 of Letters, if a teacher had completed that, they have approved that as an alternative professional learning option, which was great news. We have over 800 teachers that took the initiative on their own because they're so committed to providing great instruction to their students. They will only have to complete one capstone module, so that is wonderful news. Those who have not completed Letters will need to complete the full set, and it will need to be completed by the end of the school year, the 24-25 school year. We will also offer another cohort of Letters this summer for teachers who are interested in taking this as an alternative. Full details on the options for teachers will be released in an upcoming principal packet memo. As a reminder, this Division Literacy Plan, which I am presenting to you tonight, only addresses K-5. However, it's important that I share with you, middle school teachers are also required to complete VDOE Canvas modules in the upcoming school year. We could not list that in the plan as it can only contain K-5 information. The modules for middle school teachers and reading specialists are anticipated to come out a little later and probably in September of the upcoming school year. Principals and one assistant principal will attend a one-day training as a requirement of VDOE. We will also provide ongoing instructional coaching, job-embedded professional learning, and summer essentials to ensure our teachers have the information they need to have clarity on implementing the new textbook and teaching and assessing to the new standards, using the new report card, and using the new student reading plans. I know that you're all probably thinking right now, this is a lot, and you are right. The DOSL and DTOL teams have been engaging and working diligently in partnership with teachers, specialists, and administrators to ensure we can provide a supportive schedule, time built into the day for teachers to complete these modules as we greatly respect our teachers' time and want to do all we can to support them. We are working in partnership across schools and will make sure that we do embed that time. Principals have even been able to collaborate with each other in partnership with specialists from DTOL and PGI, as Dr. Gorham shared recently, to share strategies. And as you know, a teacher planning time group was put together by Dr. Robertson this year to solicit their ideas for supporting elementary teachers and providing more planning time. So we are definitely prioritizing that. Let's move to Section 4. This section asks for divisions to list assessments used to monitor progress. VDOE shared that the screeners or assessments associated with board-approved materials may be listed as to be determined until final may be listed as to be determined until final approvals are complete. The template requires divisions to note who administers the assessments. Please note, many other school-based specialists and staff analyze the results of the assessment to meet student needs, even if they are not listed as implementers. We also noted that daily formative assessments are all, also utilized to identify which students need extensions and enrichment and which need reteaching and acceleration as supported through our teaching and learning framework when we align how we plan and teach based on assessment data to ensure we're responding to the needs of all of our learners. Section five. This section requires divisions to include the information regarding progress monitoring tools and approaches. Here we list our strategic approach to regularly analyzing data across offices from the central office level to school-based meetings with principals and instructional leadership teams, which you see noted in the second row. As you recall, Mr. Delaney and I presented on the DOSL and DTOL Strategic Differentiated School Support Model that, um, at the September twenty-sixth school board meeting and how we use data in partnership with school administrators to ensure they have the resources and staffing support to be successful. The table in the template also includes the school-level collaborative planning process that is conducted regularly and on a more frequent basis when teachers, coaches and administrators come together on their own to collaborate and review data to respond to the needs of their learners. Section six, we are excited about. This section requires divisions to describe how the division will involve parents and caregivers in the development and the implementation of the student reading plans and to describe the plan to build successful partnerships in relation to literacy development. As you are aware, goal five in our strategic framework ensures we develop and maintain mutually supportive partnerships. We work to achieve this goal through a variety of parent caregiver and community partnerships to support student growth and wellbeing. Our Virginia Literacy Act team has solicited information of what might help parents. And so our teachers told us some of the questions they get, administrators and specialists. Um, and so we are actually partnering with the FACE team and communications and we are going to be developing videos, um, resources, links to appropriate evidence-based literacy tools. And, um, that will all be housed on a Virginia Beach City Public Schools website literacy webpage. And so that will help, um, our parents to feel informed and know who to contact if they need help, um, supporting their child. We will place a great emphasis on parent partnership and the development of student reading plans for students who are struggling and at risk for developing reading difficulties. We will notify parents or caregivers when their student's performance on a diagnostic screener indicates they need a plan. Families will be invited to participate in the process of developing and implementing the plan and will receive a copy of it. In the spring, we will solicit feedback from schools and families to ask for their experience regarding the school student reading plan to inform practices for the next year. All of these are requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act. We hope this presentation has provided you with context for the plan that you have and the details that we need to navigate the VDOE's template for our K five Division Literacy Plan. We are already busy at work, as I mentioned, to ensure we effectively support our teachers and administrators too. And ultimately, we all have the goal of positively impacting our students' lives. We will return to you on May twenty-eighth to request approval for the plan presented this evening. At this time, we stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
From my colleagues, but I have a list. And so I don't typically have this many questions and I'm sorry if I'm coming across obstinate this evening. However, um, I have a lot of questions about this plan. So, um, in the beginning, what used to be called our PALS Assessment no longer exists, which was a great, at least early tool. We, you know, we, we screened every incoming kindergartner and it gave us, you know, that nice foundation for where these kids are. That no longer exists, but you mentioned a diagnostic screener during your presentation.
And that's the VOWs, that's what replaced PALS.
Right.
And we're only one of seventeen divisions in the Commonwealth that actually launched that this year.
Right.
And so that is actually another celebration for Virginia Beach because all of the other divisions that didn't use that diagnostic assessment this year will have to learn it, will have to implement it, will have to learn how to disaggregate the data. And actually, one of our language arts coordinators is going to host, uh, professional learning that other divisions are invited to for free if they want to get some of the tips that we learned, um, as the first to launch.
So that will still happen though, that?
Yes.
That early, okay. So I understand, you know, a- all divisions don't use the same materials and we, we build our own curriculum in so many ways, but how do we measure success across the Commonwealth if everyone is using different materials? So for example, in this plan, we had a choice of two different, um, uh, books, right, the?
They listed, I believe it was eight or nine, and our curriculum can, textbook adoption committee brought forth two recommendations for the board to choose from, and they brought forth the top choice, which was HMH Into Reading.
Success, so how do we know that this is, you know, who, who is doing better? And if we aren't, well, I don't know, maybe that's a silly question just because none of us have the same materials now, but this is like something from VDOE. Um, how, how do we measure our success? A, um, I have more.
Well, I'll answer that.
Okay.
And from the state level, they're going to compare us with other, with the VOWs data. So they will have that data K three and they'll use three, five SOL data.
I understand the SOL piece, but.
That's how they'll measure us. But, um, we all will be adopting different, um, HQIM per the legislation. And so I think that that might answer some of your questions too, you know, which divisions see most success. But, um, I do believe we'll stay ahead. Um, we're already ahead with our VOWs data and have, um, returned to pre-pandemic, um, performance. Um, and we shared some of that data with you in the fall. Um, so I think that our teachers, their pedagogy and their understanding of evidence-based literacy will allow them to look at the state standards first and foremost to have clarity and use the resource that is approved by the state to deliver high-quality instruction. And they'll be able to use their professional judgment and knowledge to deliver high-quality instruction.
Okay. I think that was really important that you said that, their own judgment, um, and educational background to, to do that, um, s- uh, and, and I did see that we can still use the Letters program that we've been using. So all our supplemental materials are still good. Um, so what, it's great that we have a preliminary list, but when will that preliminary list that you talked about from the VDOE for our teachers become a permanent list? It seems a little daunting. Um, and I mentioned this earlier, people leaving the profession and now the load, as you've stated multiple times, is very heavy with this whole literacy act. And so when is all of that going to be permanent? Where, will these lists be permanent for our teachers?
I believe they'll have those, um, supplemental and intervention lists. Some of them are already out as preliminary, um, but they will update those this fall, I believe, is what they last communicated around September. Um, so we should have an idea of which curricula we can choose from at that time if we want to bolster our supplemental at that time.
So the widening of, widening of my eyes are like, uh, so we start school in August?
Oh, don't worry, we will have great materials in place if that's your question. So the new, one of the great things about the textbook we adopted and some of the teacher input was it has small group resources and we are going to purchase some of those to go with it. Um, and it's part of Core, so it's approved. So any small group, um, materials that are part of that are approved, we're fine to use them. Um, and we are actually researching other intervention and, oh, actually other supplemental materials to bolster what we already have until they finalize that list. So we will have materials for our teachers.
I know across the Commonwealth, this was a heavy lift and I appreciate the work being done. I just wish that the rollout had been a little earlier so that our teachers were prepared. Um, and, you know, weren't really looking at into the fall.
Yes.
And that they, they felt prepared when we return in August, as many, as many divisions across the Commonwealth do return in August.
Yes.
All right, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Um, uh, on slide two, you said that K through three could still have student reading plans. Can you elaborate on that exactly how, what you mean by that?
So part of the Virginia Literacy Act requires any student at risk. So as, if you recall, the PALS Assessment identified students, um, at being at risk. And if they're identified through that, which now we have the VOWs, it does the same thing, only it gives us actually better data. Um, they then receive Erie Intervention through the Early Intervention Reading Initiative through the state grant. And that's your PALS teachers, which are now called Ls. Um, and so, um, those students would have a reading plan, um, that would, which some of them already do, yes.
You mean like, okay, so sort of like a, sort of like an individual plan to, for where their deficit.
Exactly, and it's not to be confused with an IEP.
I get it.
Um, and, and a student might not even need to go through a full SRT process, but it will have very, um, cohesive goals for their need and their deficit. And I think it will enhance the communication between the classroom teacher and the, um, intervention teacher that's providing that intervention. And parents will have clarity exactly too on what they can support their children with at home.
And who, who writes those individual plans? Does the, um, the VOWs teacher?
The reading specialist will have, um, the most expertise to offer in that. And they will, um, we're providing training and we are actually, because these were just released to us as well. So to Mrs. Melnick's point, we, as soon as we get the final information, we are communicating and we're holding updates with principals. As soon as we get it, we're communicating. And this is one of those things we recently received. And, um, the reading specialists actually that just are finishing up their modules for the year, it was the last module, was all about the student reading plan. And so they are also, um, able to give us good guidance. But the, the administrators will partner with that. Um, and the professional learning for that will be this summer for admin and then teachers.
Okay, and the VOWs teachers are the ones who will carry out that plan, is that correct?
They will deliver much of the instruction aligned to it, but the teacher will partner during small group and she'll be very aware of the goal too.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I do have another question. I see no one else does, so I hope you don't mind. Um, so this was funded through a grant, right? Is this a grant?
The All In Virginia Funds, we were, uh, I believe the total we received from the state was four million dollars um, out of All In. Now, the state did give us some flexibility. Uh, we would have to amend our plan, which we do plan our spending plan. Um, and we can transfer some funds from the tutoring if we fall short on some purchasing requirements for Virginia Literacy Act, and we are definitely looking at that.
So will this funding have an end date or is this gonna be, is this?
It carried over, so it, for this coming school year, we will still have access to that and the next.
And so what happens when the members of the VDOE change? And I think that's my worry as, as we, as we enter into this program, this board can change when the governor changes. And so that, that's my fear. And I want to do right by, by all children, but this is, this is such a heavy lift and I just worry about a new, a new group coming in and seeing something different. As I haven't seen this kind of change in, in, in a while. And so I, I guess it's rhetorical, you know, I mean, don't even. I'm, I'm good, it's just that I, I, you know, that's important to, to note that you, you, you hope it doesn't. Um, I hope it serves our students well and, um, I just think our staff and our teachers, um, in advance, um, of, of not, well, not in advance, of everything that they've done so far and everything that they're going to have to do. And, um, again, um, our teachers do what they're asked to do and I have no doubt they'll do it well and serve all of our students well, so.
Agreed. They're amazing and we're going to do everything we can to make sure they feel supported.
Okay. All right, and I thank you for that. Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you. Good evening.
And, um, be under information is the federal grant application and we welcome Dr. Lorena Kelly, Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is on that, okay. Good evening, Chair Melnick, School Board members and Dr. Robertson. My name is Lorena Kelly. I'm the Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning. And I am here this evening, joined by many colleagues who support federal grants. I will be providing you with an overview of the twenty-four, twenty-five federal grant applications for programs that are authorized under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of nineteen sixty-five as amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act of two thousand fifteen. Federal guidelines require that school boards approve our grants and the Virginia Department of Ed has given us a deadline of July first. This slide provides an overview of the past, present and projected funding amounts for each grant. So I'm going to give you a moment to look at that. The final twenty-four, twenty-five award amounts for all grants will be determined at a later date. Level funding amounts based on the current year awards are used for the purposes of developing the twenty-four, twenty-five application. I will now share a brief description of each grant. The Title One Part A Grant is anticipated at over seventeen and a half million dollars. The application was prepared and schools were selected to be the Title One schools using community eligibility provision or CEP data. Title One Part A Funds provide additional financial assistance to schools with high percentages of children from low-income families to help ensure that all children meet challenging state academic content and achievement standards. The twenty-four, twenty-five application includes Title One and pre-case supports and resources and instructional allocations beyond the division allocations. Such positions include additional literacy leaders, math coaches, instructional administrative assistants, school counselors, behavior intervention specialists and assistants, family outreach representatives, gifted resource teachers, an ESL teacher and social workers. Professional learning for instructional staff and family engagement supports are also provided as well as supplies, technology programs, tutoring, field trips and summer programs are also included in the grant application. A memo was recently sent to the board with the administration's recommendations for schools to receive Title One funding for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The Title One Part D Neglected Delinquent at, or At-Risk Youth Grant is anticipated for just over a hundred sixty-one thousand. The purpose of the Title One Part D Grant is to improve educational services for neglected and delinquent children and youth under the age of twenty-one in correctional facilities and for other at-risk populations to prepare them for secondary school completion, training, employment and further education. In addition, the funds are used to support students residing in delinquent facilities, to support the transition of students from those facilities and the Virginia Beach Juvenile Detention Center back to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, including the Renaissance Academy, and to support dropout prevention programs. The Title Two Part A Grant is anticipated at just over two million dollars. The purpose of Title Two Part A is to increase academic achievement for all students. The purpose of Title II Part A is to increase academic achievement for all students through improving teacher quality. The Title II grant will fund 19 instructional coaches as either literacy leaders or math coaches. These coaches support the implementation of effective instruction in elementary, middle, and high school. The Title III Part A grant is anticipated at just over $255,000. The Title III Part A is utilized to fund the salary and benefits of an English learner instructional specialist. This specialist assists English second language learners and classroom teachers with instructional support as well as provides professional development for ESL and classroom teachers. The grant also provides funding for educators to attend professional learning relative to English learners and best practices. The 2425 application includes funds to support stipends for English learner family engagement liaisons and to support family engagement activities. Additionally, the grant will fund Elevation, which is a digital platform that allows teachers and administrators to access English learner student data, supports digital meetings for student accommodation planning and monitoring purposes, and provides federally mandated documents in multiple languages. The Title IV Part A grant is anticipated for just over $1 million. Aligned to the Division Strategic Action Agenda, Title IV Part A funds are intended to improve students' academic achievement by increasing the capacity of school divisions to provide all students with access to a well-rounded education, improve conditions for student learning, and increase the effective use of technology. Supports from the Title IV Part A grant include, but are not limited to, providing material resources and training for safe and healthy teachers and students, instructional materials for intervention programs, virtual and face-to-face tutoring, fees for free and reduced lunch AP and IB students, integrated systems of support and graduation labs to close achievement gaps and improve graduation rates. Thank you for allowing me to present this information to you this evening. We will return on May 28th to request your consent. We stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, we have nothing on our consent agenda this evening, so that'll take us to action. The personnel report and administrative appointments. I call for a motion to approve the May 14th, 2024 Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Motion made by Ms. Riggs and because of my board, my screen. Yeah, motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded. Yeah, and Trenes made a. Okay, motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Kendrick. Any discussion? Okay, the voting board is. Uh, the voting board is open. No, she left. We have six people. That's all we have is a quorum.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have six ayes, so the motion did pass for the personnel report.
How do we have an abstention?
Because Ms. Brown is not here, present in the school board room right now.
She left.
She left, okay. There we go. Okay, so we have six ayes, so the motion did pass.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Robertson, do you have anything? Okay, all right. Do any school board members have anything to report for committee, organization, or board reports? You do? Okay, Ms. Owens.
Just very briefly, wanted to remind the public and the board that PRC changed its date, so we're going to be meeting this Monday at 10:00 a.m. And we are looking forward to discussing the items on our agenda and have updated the agenda to also include some discussion related to the weighted issue that we talked about today.
Excellent, and what's that? Oh, and you added the BPMC. Okay, she added a lot, and I thank you for that. Thank you very much. Mr. Cowan.
Yes, I wanted to report that Ms. Kendrick and I had a wonderful opportunity that I had never experienced before, and it was a celebration at the Adult Learning Center. And it was a recognition of all the foreign language students who are working their way through the English learning process. And I have to say, it caught me completely by surprise emotionally. It was really touching. It was really inspired. There was lots of noise and celebration and recognition by friends and family. But it gave you one of those snapshot moments that don't happen very often where you realize just what a wonderful country we have and what it means for somebody to come from somewhere else and to engage in the English learning process and to be so grateful and thankful for the opportunity. And it was terrific.
That's, that's beautiful. Thank you for sharing that and thank you for attending that. And so the public knows, we, here in Virginia Beach, we service nearly 80 languages and that's kind of hard to wrap your head around. I mean, you stop and think, do we even have 80 languages in the world? And we service them here in the small southeastern corner of the Commonwealth of Virginia and it's, it is really impressive. And I really thank you for, for attending that and reporting that, both of you. Thank you so much.
And over 25 countries were represented at that event.
Wow, that, that is so great. Thank you for that. Okay, so we are going to go back into closed session, but I am going to ask for the record, does anybody else have to leave? Because we only have a quorum. And so if anybody has to leave, we'll have to save our closed session for the next meeting. So I'm going to quickly say, wait. So with that, we're going to quickly keep that cough at bay and I moved at the school board recess into closed session in accordance with the exceptions, and I'm reading fast, to open meetings law, set forth in Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, 7, and 8, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall, shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss, one, superintendent's evaluation, two, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, and three, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters. I made that motion and so I need a second by. Oh, well, so we have a motion and a second by Ms. Kendrick and we'll wait to vote. I do. Yeah. Okay. In addition, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution or higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is a minor, the student's parent or legal guardian shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting. If such student, parent, or guardian so request in writing and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. So in addition to the superintendent evaluation, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters, we have added student discrimination and discipline cases. So we have a motion and a second by Ms. Kendrick. And in a jumpsuit. And I thank you for that. And so the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have six ayes to go into closed.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
The Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard discussed or considered.
I need a motion made by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Riggs, all in favor. The voting board is open, but my computer died, so...
So how do you vote, Chair?
Yes, yes.
So Madam Chair, we have...
School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard discussed or considered. I need a motion made by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Riggs, all in favor. The voting board is open, but my computer died, so...
So how do you vote, Chair?
Yes.
So Madam Chair, we have six ayes for certification of close, the motion did pass.
I'll entertain a motion that the School Board adopt the amended superintendent evaluation process and the performance standard weighting on the superintendent summative evaluation instrument. Is the following, 1.25 for each standard 1 through 8. Motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Kendrick.
You're supposed to say as amended, as discussed and amended in the process.
So my motion for the record was that the School Board adopt the amended superintendent evaluation process and that the performance standard weighting on the superintendent summative evaluation instrument is the following, 1.25 for each standard 1 through 8. Is that okay? Okay, the motion was made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Kendrick. The voting board is open. An amen, an aye?
So Madam Chair, we have six ayes, so the motion did pass.
Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned at 8:29.